Will be held remotely via video conference. So we asked the public to continually check the town's website for updates and new information. Phil, can we have a roll call?
Certainly. For Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finerty is absent for the moment. Secretary is here, Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Zuccarelli.
Present.
Board Member Burke.
Present.
And Board Member Catalanato.
Present.
Can we please?
He has six of seven.
Thank, thank you, Phil. Please join for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Phil minutes?
Yes, we have minutes from December seventeenth, twenty twenty.
December seventeen, twenty twenty, I have a motion to approve. By Gloria, and second by Zuccarelli. All in favor. Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent. Let's move right on, is Janice here? Or Dave? Janice or Dave?
Dave, Will Cox was here.
Okay, is Janice here?
Now I don't see him.
Okay, then we'll put Dave on first. David?
I'm looking for Dave. Uh, Jackie, one second. Me, um, one at a time.
Uh, while we have a second, I just want to put a plug in for Patty, who has done a terrific job on catching up on all of our minutes. She really has worked very hard.
Thank you, Patty.
Thanks, Patty.
Thank you, Phil.
And thank you, Mr. Secretary. You do a good job, too.
Well.
I can remember a time when we were like a year behind.
I know.
Okay, David?
There he is.
There he is.
You're muted here.
David, you're muted.
There we go.
There you go. Okay. David, you're on first now because, um, Janice is not here yet.
Oh, okay.
This is a town board referral.
Yeah, this is, um, similar referral to the one that we did in December, uh, on the Ag Conservation Districts code. And the, the town board sponsor agrees with your recommendation that perhaps the, uh, the code should allow, Ag Conservation Districts on properties that are at least seven acres in size. Originally it was at ten acres, but the planning board felt that, uh, given the small size of farming and ag properties, uh, at this point, that it might make sense to lower the threshold to seven acres. Seven acres is also consistent with what the minimum acreage is for an agricultural district, a New York State Ag District property. So, uh, this, this would make it more in line with that. The tables that I sent you, you'll see that we only picked up five more properties that are between seven and ten acres. So it really didn't, uh, affect, affect the, the outcome that much.
This was an excellent breakdown, David. This is really informative.
And, and actually I, I have to correct that because there are, uh, seven properties that I had included in the, uh, ten acres and greater that were, they are all nurseries as a matter of fact, and they're all in the Eastport area. They're all outside of the Ag Overlake District, so those seven nursery properties, um, have to be removed from this table as well, and they total a hundred and twenty acres, so.
Okay.
We're, we're down to a considerably smaller number of properties that will even qualify for this Ag Conservation District program.
Will you send a revised, uh?
I, I will send that, yes.
Yeah, because this is, this is very good to, I printed it out and we'll keep it. It's very interesting to see where these farms are and what they're doing. So. Does anybody have any questions on this? Dave, what, what exactly is the language for the referral that we're approving?
Um, I can, uh, if I can share my screen. I don't see share screen.
It's on the bottom?
It's green.
Between.
Oh, there we go, okay. Uh, so let me find the code.
Uh, it's, it's highlighted there in yellow.
Okay.
Parcel shall be seven acres or greater situated within the Ag Overlake District.
So it goes from ten to seven. Yeah. Okay, are there any questions on this? If not, um, I have a motion to approve the referral.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, and second, I can't, can, you can take it down, David.
Oh, okay.
Who's the second on it? Gloria, Robin, second by Robin, all in favor. Opposed, extensions, six in favor, one absent. Is, uh, Janice? I'm here, okay.
Thank you.
Welcome, Janice. Are you, are we going to see you?
Please come.
Okay. So this is the, uh, Janice is here for town board referral, amending article four, the MFPRD of Southampton Town.
Yes, good morning, hi, good afternoon. Hi, how are you? Thank you, everyone.
Good, good.
Welcome, Craig.
Nice to see you.
Thank you, um, and thanks to the board for having me. Um, as you know, I gave you a brief intro last week and sent, or last meeting, and sent you a copy of the code. And it's really to get your input, we had a public hearing on Tuesday night. Um, there was not any real public comments on it, so they kept it open with a written comment period, uh, waiting for your input on it. So did you?
Give us just a couple of sentences for an overview, uh.
Sure, so the MFPRD, um, is a, it's basically a cluster for commerc- uh, multifamily. That's the best way I can put it. It's, it's a zoning, floating zone category that allows for multifamily, but also requires like a certain amount of set aside for open space or recreational amenities, and it has design standards also. Um, so what the problem was, is that it, it allows six units per acre, but when you go beyond six units to, and when you go, it said but up to a limit of seventy-five. And anything over seventy-five has to be a PDD. And as you know, we don't have PDDs anymore. So even if you have the land area for six units an acre, and let's say you could get eighty, you can't actually apply for eighty. You would have to apply for PDD, and you can't do that. So we want to eliminate that from the code, because that should have been done as part of housekeeping when the PDDs were eliminated. So really the gist is to eliminate that. But in addition, the supervisor said, let's take a look at, you know, extending the bout, the, um, distance from Hamlet centers, because the code right now says only, you can't put senior housing unless it's five hundred feet from a, from a Hamlet center. And so we, we increased that to a quarter mile, because a quarter mile is still considered walkable, and there's really nothing within five hundred feet that anybody's going to be able to build anything on. Um, and then a one mile distance for others. So those were the two, um, biggest changes. The other changes were minor housekeeping, it said something about moderate income. We just referred it to chapter two sixteen, which has all the affordability requirements. It had a fee of like fifteen dollars or something, we just said ask for the fee schedule. Um, and then lastly, it talked about Pine Barren credits, et cetera. Um, and we said, you know, that would be at the sole discretion of the town board, whether or not they want to use any kind of credits. Um, but it would still be potentially a receiving area, because we're always mindful that PDDs helped us get to that two to one receiving area for Pine Barren Core Credits, so we want to be able to still have that as an opportunity, um, if the town board wanted to. So that's basically the, the overall sum and substance of it, but I'm happy to go through anything or any questions, if you have any.
I think we're somewhat familiar with it, are there any questions on the board? Given the.
Discussion two weeks ago.
Yeah. So, um, all right, so if, uh, no, no changes on our part, do I have a motion to adopt the referral?
So will your referral would just be no planning issues, I guess?
Well, I didn't ever like that word, no planning issues.
Well, what would you like to say?
What else can we say? Planning board supports the legislation?
Yeah, planning board supports the legislation. That sounds better.
Let's pop more positive.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Okay, so we still need a vote on that. Um, motion by Zuccarelli, second by Phil, all in favor. Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent. Thank you, Janice.
Thank you so much, have a great day, everybody. Bye.
Okay, um, Anthony is here. We're going to move now on to the first work session, so we will close out the afternoon, regular session and move into a work session. We have a couple of items. Uh, the first is the, uh, what's known as two forty-five Rogers Way Hampton Bay's district. I know there are a bunch of people, um, wanting to come in.
Is this, uh, Greg Reckler?
It was a whole list, right?
Yeah. All of them?
Yeah, let them all in, yeah.
All right. Not a problem. Nice to have it written down.
Isn't that nice? Very organized.
Yeah, I was gonna say we're getting organized. After having.
Getting used to this, welcome.
Thank you very much.
The way we can charge by the head.
Yes, I, um, so, um.
No, well, let's, let's, let's wait till everybody is here, I think, right? And Brian's here.
Okay.
Just want to make sure your whole crew is here, there's quite a long list.
Yeah, I'm looking for, I don't see Kristen yet either.
There's Guy.
Hi.
Hi, Guy.
Hello, everybody?
My God.
Kristen, let's see, uh.
Do you see Kristen? Okay, good.
Anyone else?
Uh, do you have a, a, um, Jessica Schumer?
Okay, yeah.
Chick is there.
Gotcha, good.
Someone's dog is here.
Fine, I'm muted.
There's Jessica. Kristen, Chick, I think we can probably start.
Yeah.
Who is going to be leading this? Is it going to be you, Guy, or?
Well, what, uh, I'm gonna be like the emcee, great. Greg Reckler is going to start off with an introduction. Then we'll have a, our architect, um, explain the buildings and go through its presence on the site. And, uh, I'll wrap up, and any questions that you have, we have our consultants here to answer.
Excellent, I just want to go on the record to say, we've got, it's a work session, we've got a full agenda today, and we have another item on the work session, so please be mindful if you can keep it within a half hour, we would appreciate it.
Madam Chair, um, if I may, can we also make sure we have Ray DeBaius in here?
Oh, yes, where is Ray?
Uh, one second.
Thanks, Kathleen. We specifically requested he be here.
And, uh, is, is Eric from Bowler, is, is it, um, in this one?
I will make sure.
Okay, so, yeah, he's our critical presenter. Um, Eric, Eric, my, uh, Ma- Mian?
Yeah.
Okay.
Welcome, Ray. Good to see you.
And, uh.
Okay.
And if I.
Um, if there's anyone else, just let me know.
Okay, um, so can I ask that Kristen have the ability to, uh, share, share her screen?
Yeah.
Of our presentation?
Okay, so Greg, you're going to, uh, start us off.
I will.
Okay.
Okay.
It's all yours.
Okay, great, so, um, as I said, I'm Greg Reckler, I'm co-managing partner of Reckler Equity Partners, developer of the Hampton Business District at Kowreski Airport. Um, as you know, um, you know, we've, um, been before this board several times before, uh, with this application, mostly discussing traffic and the use of the airport, and I am happy to report through a series of studies and traffic studies and discussions with town's traffic consultant, coupled with, uh, proposed common sense restrictions, you know, drafted by, um, the town, the town's attorney, which will give the board, um, continued oversight once the property is operational. We do believe that we're, you know, we're now appropriately addressing the concerns we discussed in the past. Today, we'd like to, um, present the proposed plan for two forty-five Rogers Way, an eighty-eight thousand and sixty square foot warehouse and distribution, um, building that sits on, uh, eighteen point six seven acres. I understand, as stated before, we've limited time, um, and so we're going to be brief and concise, uh, and make time for any questions that you have for our team. In attendance is Ray Mulbauer from BL Architects, Stephen Nero de from Aries Design, Eric Mian from Bowler Engineering, and as you heard from Guy Germano, as well as the rest of our team, um, you know, supporting other aspects of the project. Just a brief history, this property, um, served as a military base until nineteen sixty-nine, and was ultimately transferred to Suffolk County in nineteen seventy for the purpose of economic development. For many years, the county and the town were kind of at odds determining the best use of the property. In two thousand and five, the original APDD was approved by the town of Southampton, divisioning mixed-use development and industrial, you know, development, totaling about eight hundred and forty thousand square feet. In two thousand and eight, Suffolk County put out an RFP to select the developer for the property in accordance with the APDD. And in two thousand and nine, in the heart of the worst financial crisis since the Great Depression, Reckler Equity was selected to be the developer of the property. In two thousand and twelve, an amended APDD was approved by the town, permitting maximum development of two hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet, which equates to an FAR point two. The property, um, as you can see from this plan, um, is broken up into two quadrants. The South parcel, which is on the right hand of the screen, and the North parcel, which is on the left hand of the screen. Uh, to date, um, the three buildings on the South parcel have been developed, and that totals a hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-one, uh, on square feet, providing approximately three hundred permanent jobs on that, on that portion of the property. It's anticipated that the two remaining proposed buildings on the North parcel, two forty-five Rogers, which is the one we're discussing today, and two thirty Rogers, um, will total a hundred and ninety thousand square feet. You know, once complete, the entire master development would total three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and thirteen square feet versus the four thirty, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, which was approved in the APDD. This represents a thirteen percent reduction in the density, um, and reduces the FAR from point two to point one seven five. So, yeah, we are under developing it from, it's, you know, the, the original, um, approval. Um, two forty-five Rogers, which is what we're here to discuss today, was designed to conform with the same design standard and aesthetic as the three buildings completed on the South parcel. I'm going to ask Ray, our architect, to walk, uh, walk you through the proposed design, two forty-five Rogers, so, Ray?
Thanks, Craig. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chairman and members of the board. Uh, my name is Ray Mulbauer, principal at BL Companies. I'm the architect of record for the project of two forty-five Rogers Way. Um, as Greg mentioned, fourth building in the Hampton, uh, Business District Development, and probably the most important thing I can tell you about it is that uh, right out of the gate, we departed from, uh, what is the typical, uh, Amazon prototype for the building, and, uh, instead deferred entirely to the, uh, criteria of the PDD for, um, architecture and for the finishes and materials. Um, these are four photos of the existing buildings, which we used as the precedent for our design, so we're basically matching, uh, what was done in these buildings. In the top left, you can see a typical entryway and an entry portico for the buildings. Uh, anodized aluminum framing and, uh, anodized aluminum portico surrounding that entry. Uh, the top right, you see two twenty Rogers Way in the foreground and two hundred Rogers Way in the background. Um, you'll see three different types of CMU, uh, uh, at the base, a plinth, and then a couple of bands of striping. And above that is hardy shingle, uh, panels surrounded by a hardy trim. And, um, you know, all of this, uh, is divided up vertically by the red steel channels that you see, so it visually breaks up the length of the facades. Um, the bottom right photo here, you see a typical corner element on the building with the corner storefront and entries. Um, and then the bottom left photo is the, uh, loading docks, and we're going to replicate that again, um, using, uh, white overhead doors. Um, a little bit challenging to see in smaller scale, but there's also an approved design for the dumpster enclosures, which is a uh, corrugated metal, three-sided, um, enclosure with, uh, gates on the front that are made of vertical weathered wood planking. So again, we'll be working identically with those materials. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is a view of the southwest corner looking toward the northwest. Um, and what you'll recognize right away is we're showing exactly the same materials and finishes and colors as you saw in the precedent photos of the existing buildings. Um, there is foundation planting that you see around the base of the building. Uh, the pathway that you see here is the pathway that surrounds the entire development. Um, to the left is the start of the berm, which rises up about ten feet above the finished floor level. Um, and you'll also see, we've, we've indicated a tenant sign at the corner of the building. That location has yet to be determined, and of course, we'll be coming back once that is determined. Um, and, uh, and then the parking area to the right is, uh, between the building and Collins Way. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is a view of the south facade of the building, standing in that parking lot between the building and Collins Way. Uh, most of the storefront features are on this facade, as are the, uh, pedestrian entries. Um, on the left, uh, the left portico is the entry and exit for the employees. Adjacent to that is an entry for what's called the hub function, which is where you might go to pick up a parcel, uh, as opposed to having it delivered. And then on the right corner is an entry for a, uh, workroom that can be accessed either from the inside or the outside by, uh, employees. And then far right, you see the start of a canopy. That canopy covers the vans as they're being loaded, it shelters them from the elements. And, uh, that is also surrounded by the same aluminum, uh, panels that, uh, surround all of the porticos. And those panels are basically there to hide the structure and the, and the, uh, metal deck. Uh, next slide, please. Um, in the bottom right corner of this slide is, is a view that takes the entire building into context. We're looking at the southwest corner, looking, uh, northeast. And this is taken from a view well above the, uh, the berm, looking at the building. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Nero de to talk about the, the berm and the landscaping.
Has Steve been added to the meeting?
I'm here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Hi, this is Steve Nero de with Aries Design. Um, good afternoon. Uh, yeah, as far as the berm, uh, goes, uh, the picture you're seeing on the left is an image of the existing berm that's, uh, on the south side of Collins Way. And, um, the idea is to take that planting that we have found to be very effective on the site, uh, in both in screening and providing habitat and, and ornamental features, um, and bringing that north along the berm, uh, 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 north of Collins Way, along the berm of the proposed building. Uh, so, and then interior wise, we're looking the same thing, where we're being consistent with the other plantings that we've used, utilized throughout the development of the, uh, other buildings as well.
Ray? And who is next?
Eric, are you on?
I am here, yes.
Okay, great, so we go to the next slide?
Yeah, if you don't mind going to the next slide, Kristen, so, uh, good afternoon, members of the board, Eric Mine of Bowler with a civil engineer on the project. Um, so this is a rendered site plan, I, I think you're familiar with it by now, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll start walking you through. Um, we'll start with Collins Way on the south side. Um, that's access from County Route thirty-one to the traffic circle that already exists today. Um, so on that side of the building, that south side parking area, we have an ingress cut from Collins Way. There's approximately a hundred and ninety-nine stalls dedicated to the employees who'll be working inside the building and some of the van delivery drivers for their personal vehicles. Um, as you proceed northward through the building, north of the building is the truck court. Um, we were able to divorce the truck access to and from the building to its singular own cut, um, from County Route thirty-one. Uh, we work with the county significantly on the access scheme. Um, this is the safest approach, there's seven loading bays, um, and there's five, uh, loading areas for, um, trucks that, uh, may have to, to wait to, to access their loading bay. And there's, you know, plenty of circulation space as well. This is also where the trash enclosure is located on the east side of that area. Moving northward from there, there's another cut. Um, originally, we had contemplated providing a full access cut here, but in working with the county, we've agreed to an ingress-only cut. Um, so there'll be no traffic leaving from that cut. That cut leads to the area where the vans will be stored, and the remainder of the van drivers will park their personal vehicles. So the, the area immediately inside that curb cut will be dedicated to them parking their vehicles, and most of the vans will be parked and stored, uh, on that east or leeside of the site through there. Um, that central area where the canopy off the building is, that's where the loading and staging will occur, as Ray referenced before. Um, there's room for approximately a hundred vans at a time, fifty under the canopy, uh, fifty staged waiting to go. All those vans and all the traffic from the employee area on the south side of the building will exit through that cut there, out to Rogers Way, and will utilize the traffic circle, uh, to Collins, uh, and utilize the signalized intersection back to County Route thirty-one. Uh, one other aspect I wanted to call attention to, Kristen, can you go to the next slide? Do we have the aerial overlay? If you're familiar with the area, um, you'll see the building that exists today out on the road. So this building will line up, uh, approximately twenty feet further away from the road than that. And if you're familiar, you'll know beyond that building, the grading of the site drops off. So we took advantage of that, we're actually setting the finished floor of the proposed building approximately six or seven feet below the roadway surface. Um, so between that and adding the, the six to eight foot high berm, um, we were able to nestle the building into the site pretty naturally. And then north of there, you'll see we're maintaining approximately one acre of undeveloped area where it will remain natural. Um, so you'll have a nice streetscape, uh, through the area. And if the board has any questions, more than happy to answer.
So, so that building that's there now, which used to be like an appliance store, that's going to stay?
No, that's going to be demolished.
Okay. And the ingress egress for the larger trucks, I presume? Yeah, right there, that's, those are the eighteen-wheelers or whatever.
Correct.
Seems like a pretty reasonable solution.
And those loading docks, again, are, you know, four feet set down from finished floor, so, you know, where the trucks access the building, that's actually ten foot below the roadway grade, so you'll barely see them, if at all.
A, a minor comment, you mentioned fifty vans waiting to be loaded. Um, I'm assuming the operation would be you shut your, your engine off until you go in to get picked, the stuff picked up, that you're not, you don't have fifty vans, um, running their engines, waiting to go into the loading dock.
This is Jessica from Amazon, uh, Jessica Schumer, I'm an, uh, Economic Development Manager. Um, yes, that is correct, the vans don't idle, even no idling policy.
Thank you.
But aren't a lot of them going to be electric anyway?
Eventually, that's the hope, though we don't know where they're going yet, but yes, uh, I, I assume electric vehicles don't idle either.
Uh, and there's, in the truck area, there's sufficient circulation?
Correct, if you look at the actual, this is the rendered site plan, on the actual site plan, you'll see we demonstrate, there's a fifty-foot radius in that um, northeast corner, the upper left corner, if you will, from plan view, um, which is sufficient for turnaround, even with, with trucks parked in the loading.
Okay.
Question, is there any plans for solar on the roof? It's a lot of roof space.
Thank you, Dennis.
Hi, Dennis.
And Dennis is here.
Yeah, oh yeah, I can hear. Any plans for solar?
Amy, I'll defer to you.
Solar, anyone, solar?
Yeah, Amy?
Yeah, im- immediately, there is no plan for solar, but it is designed, um, to accept the load of solar panels, and also included in the design currently is the entire conduit, uh, system in order to, um, uh, allow for charging of the future EV vehicles once they are, um, uh, put into, into action here.
Okay. It's unfortunate, I mean, once again, New York State is behind the energy code, you know, they, so what, has solar been out for twenty years? I don't know why facilities of this size are passing day by day, and no solar.
Right.
So.
Well, maybe, maybe you'll think, uh, expedite your, um, timeline for that and consider solar. I mean, we can't mandate it, but we sure are encouraging it.
Especially if you're going to electric vehicles, that's a perfect you, use for any additional solar that you could be developing that may not be used in the facility itself.
Town board mandated it. They could oppose those conditions when they, when.
They could oppose those conditions when they when they wrote the local law.
Yeah.
I can't blame the state, I guess.
But yeah, but on yeah, on behalf of record, we do. We do agree. It's 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 something that we'll talk to Amazon about, but we think it makes good sense. So we'll we'll recommend it.
Okay, okay. So we have other ingredients in the in this presentation?
Good guy.
No, I was gonna say, I think I think that wraps. We're trying to keep this concise. I think that wraps up the presentation. We've gone over the traffic issues for quite some time now. So any other questions you have about plan? Anything concerning it? We have everyone here to answer those questions.
I have one quick question. I'm sorry. Is it Mr. Mulbauer? Is that how you pronounce?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Thanks. You mentioned a pickup parcel area. Approximately, how many customers would want to anticipate during any given business day for for pickup?
I'm going to turn that over to to Amazon to respond to.
We don't anticipate, you know, any more than three to four an hour, I would say at most. That's generally, I think, how we anticipate these. I just want to double check how many spots we have. How many spaces do we have allocated for that? The pickup area?
I think I heard 50.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a a large percentage of the stalls in that southern area are available for that. I would say there's approximately 12 that would be dedicated to that.
If there's 12 dedicated, then my guess is I should probably revise my, maybe 10. We don't put more than we would anticipate being used. Yeah, so there's not a we wouldn't anticipate more cars than stalls. Let's put it that way.
Thank you.
Any other quick? Ray, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
I just want to say that, you know, we will condition that there be no aviation related uses conducted on or in relation to or in connection with the use of the property. So including but not limited to air freight, commercial air cargo, et cetera. So I think we've had a conversation about this before.
Yes, and and and, you know, we we agree with that and we will agree to cover some thresholds that would would I have on that. That's fine.
Okay, this is a work session. So I know we have and and I we appreciate greatly the your concise presentation. It's good to see it in this sense. I was over in the site last week and it's it's very attractive. I have to congratulate the architect. It's it's very handsome. It's clean. It's low profile. I just want to make sure that someone has looked into BOSI's. I guess, Ray, were you going to do that? The BOSI school is smack across the street. And that has to be taken into consideration in our traffic. So we don't have to get into it now, but I just want to go on the record about that.
Yes, and I should mention that the applicant's last information they submitted, which was about a week ago, I think, they actually verified that their count information, the traffic counts were done when BOSI's was in session. So they did pick up traffic from BOSI's. And about that time, BOSI's was about 85% at prior COVID compared to prior COVID situation. I also spoke with three people from BOSI's as well regarding access points. So I think that's covered by one of the planning of conditions of approval, which involves a future traffic study after full operation of the facility.
Okay, good. I mean, when I read the 2011 traffic study, there was no specific reference to BOSI's, but I didn't know whether or not they had calculated the traffic impact in their numbers. And so I deferred it to you as our traffic consultant. Any other questions by anyone, from anyone?
Tara?
Yes.
If there are no other questions, if I may.
Yes, please go.
So I think, you know, we've pretty, I think we've covered covered everything that this project involves with the board. And at this time, I would request, if you can, to adopt a resolution putting this down for public hearing, possibly on the 25th of March. This is our eighth meeting. We've started in October 8. And it's been a long time and we'd like to get the project going. I think we've all worked hard on it so that you know, we have a very good project, as you can see, and we've agreed to the the covenants and restrictions that Kathleen had prepared. So I think we're we're ready to go forward.
I appreciate that and I appreciate the presentation. We have to go through our process guide, as well, you know. We have to deem the application complete and then schedule a public hearing. Claire is not here and we are going through the files, so we'll take a look to see if that's possible on March 25. If not, it could be the week after, but we have to, we have to do that. So we're aware that you want to move forward.
Okay.
Okay, so thank you all very much for coming. I'll have to drive. You're all in your faces. We appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, Charles. I'm not quite sure who is here for the next work session. Does?
Hi, Jackie.
Yeah, Jackie family. Hi.
Yeah, hi, it's Rosemary Barone, if you could let her in, please.
This is Woodland Pines Lot 23. Jackie, if you would give us an overview.
Sure.
Into this.
And Rosemary, can you hear us? You're still muted. I'll share the screen, though, while she's.
Okay, I'm here.
Okay, great. All right, so this is the subject property. This is 33 Whipper Will Lane in East Quag. They are subject to 50% clearing pursuant to Aqua for Protection Overlay District. And currently, the property is almost nearly 100% cleared with landscaping, as you can see. And I have here, let me just, sorry, the packet was in black and white, so I just wanted you to see the color version. And then this is the letter we received from Rosemary. They are asked, they are subject to 50% and they are asking for 100% to be cleared. They have a possible development rate that they are utilizing. This is the parcel. This is a previous survey, which does not reflect the current circumstances. They are working on getting an updated survey to show the full extent of clearing. This is the development rate they're considering utilizing, which is 46,560 square feet. It's in similar school district and CR 200 zoning in the Aqua for Protection Overlay District. This is just a copy of the map and this is their parcel highlighted in orange right there.
Is that the parcel that's going to stay undeveloped or is that the parcel that's over over clear?
This is the parcel that's over cleared.
Okay. Used with the in the packet.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, so that's the parcel where it's originating basically on the subdivision map. And I'll go back to.
Can you go back to your, the original, the picture that you had? You said it was landscaped?
The arrow, yeah.
It has been revegetated.
No, no, it's just a non-native vegetation, non-native landscaping. I'll let Rosemary Barone really speak to the applicant's request. My concern and why I put this on for a work session is I've never seen the planning board. You know, we started doing these waivers in like 2008 and 2009. I was just concerned that she's asking for 100% clearing when I have not seen the planning board ever go to that, you know, threshold before. So I wanted the planning board to review this and Rosemary is here to represent her client's wishes. So I'll just turn it over to her for now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thanks for having me. Just a little history of my client. He's he's born and raised in the area. He raised his family on this property. Three children. The clearing restrictions left little room for his kids to play outside safely. So, yeah, he did. He cleared more than he should have. And as Jackie said, we're here to mitigate in way of offsite preservation. As you may have noticed on the subdivision map Jackie brought up, it is part of a planned cluster development where the bulk of the area of the subdivision has already been preserved. We found a great piece. It's and I should have, I don't know how to share my screen and it's a different computer, but I can send it to Jackie. The property is just three miles away. The sending parcel, it's within the same Aqua for Protection Overlay District and in Zone 3 of the groundwater management zones. So it's a suitable property. And I do understand, you know, Jackie has told me that the board hasn't allowed the 100% mitigation via the offsite preservation. But I think this is unique in that we found a great property that is suitable within a good distance. And the subject property is part of a cluster, so there's a really lot of preservation already there. And I do know it's in your discretion, obviously. But I do ask if this is something you would consider. My client plans to stay there for, you know, he's been there for a really long time and he would like to stay there. He just prefers it. Not so vegetated.
Did your client know that the that the clearing was restricted? He's in an aquifer protection overlay.
Yeah, you know, he did. And he's owning it. He, you know, he did. He, you know, and we're here, we're doing, we're going to do whatever we need to do to make it right.
But he could revegetate.
He could.
Okay, as long as that's an option. I certainly think that, you know, we have never approved 100% clearing and all the time on the boards, on my time on the board, and particularly in an aquifer protection overlay district. So I don't know. Does anyone else on the board have?
Yeah, Jackie, I'm looking at the certificate. This isn't a full development right. It's a fraction of the development, right? Is that correct? Or am I reading?
Yeah, no, it's just a fraction because the parcel it originated from is the 46,000.
So there, so it's not a full development, right?
No, because it's originating from the CR 200 zoning district, but this parcel, as described, is allowed to clear, you know, half essentially because it's a 46,000 square foot property. So it's a pre-existing non-conforming parcel in the CR 200, which is why it's not a full development, right? But they wanted to extinguish the full clearing rights associated with this partial development rate, which would be the 23,000, which would essentially bring the property, you know, they're allowed to clear approximately 20,000 square feet. With this, they would basically be asking to clear the entire parcel.
Please, for a second, what are the the areas around or all the houses around in compliance?
Yes, give me one second.
It looked to be.
And the clearing is, what is it, 40% there? I'm sorry.
50%.
50%.
Almost 50.
And the houses all around have complied to the 50%?
In general, some of them, we have some files where they've already come in to revegetate. You know, it's a fairly large subdivision, so I haven't done the analysis on every single one. But you can see, you know, this one appears to be in compliance. This one is close, you know, to compliance. These ones, this this one definitely has, you can see less vegetation in the backyard. This one's under construction, so I can check and see if we have any application on this. But the majority of them are in compliance with the 50%.
This would be wholly inconsistent with the nature of all the other houses in the area.
Yes, it would be.
It would be unique to the subdivision. We do have several site disturbance applications that we've received. And to this point, I don't see any other ones that have received offsite preservation. They've all come to you for revegetation plans.
Right. My my sense, I mean, and I'm just one voice here, is that they should submit a revegetation plan in on their property. And I would be opposed to 100% approving 100% clearing. So.
My my comment is that the applicant's representative said that he raised his children there and they needed room to play. If the children are raised, why do they need to play there? I mean, that's his true, that's his reason.
Well, that that's how we got to where we are. And he, you know, like many, he just, you know, likes likes it more open. I do want to add by preserve, by by doing that offsite preservation, we're preserving an acre of land for our 20,000 square foot of clearing that we're requesting. So we are, you know, you know, preserving preserving the land in the same Aqua for Protection Overlay District.
I understand that.
Apples to apples, yeah.
My my concern, Rosemary, is 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 not the, and I thank you for attempting to conserve in another area. But we have landowners who are all around this house who are abiding by the regulations. And because they can't buy a property or a development right, they are not going to be able to clear to 100%. I I like consistency and fairness and I I don't know if this is fair to the current property owners in the area or the nature on the look of the community. So I agree with Jackie. I I would not be comfortable with 100% clearing.
Could I ask if anything, you know, under 100%, but more than your standard 50% would be acceptable to the board?
Well, well, first of all, what, I mean, it's obviously not denuded. What is in there right now? Like I can.
There's some planting along the perimeter of the property. I mean, we can certainly offer a buffer or something if, you know, you're worried about the look of the development. You know, you can't, I mean, you can't really see. I've not been there too often, but you wouldn't notice from driving by that the property was different than on any other property.
Rosemary, can I just make a suggestion that you go back to your client? Draw out a plan. I think you're not hearing a lot of support for 100% clearing. Go back, see what you can do and then work with Jackie and and go from there.
What's directly, what's, does it border open space? Is that a preserve?
That that was part of what I believe, Jackie, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, is part of it was a cluster subdivision. So that's completely preserved property. I think it's 40 something acres.
It looks like the town of Southampton.
It is. It's town of Southampton, open space to the south, Dennis, and there's also this across the street. Yeah.
It might be productive to explore augmenting the rear of that property with some planting. And maybe not to the 50%, but if you could use that in conjunction with the development right, that might be productive. I think Jackie's suggestion is a good one, Rosemary, if you can go back to your client and and show us some planting primarily along the rear of the property. So it backs up, so as opposed to scattering planting throughout the lot that aren't really going to do anything, we sort of strive to get contiguous, open, you know, vegetation when we can.
I just, the only thing is, just want to make the this is not a conservation easement and this wasn't done really, and I don't mean to have minimized it for appearances. It's an aquifer protection. So there is a reason that they don't want grass and they want the native and they want certain plantings here. I think we can't lose that reasoning for the aquifer protection. It was not a conservation. It's not a buffer, a buffer. There is a reasoning for APOD protection in terms of clearing. And before and the all the other neighbors knew this and they're abiding by this to protect the aquifer. I think we have to be careful when we start to amend that, that we don't start a slippery slide of everybody coming in in the area and saying, I don't want to amend, I don't want to abide by the act of protection. And now we're we're starting to amend it. So I I just want to be aware and make it clear what my position was, was not just looks, but the fact the type of clearing restriction this is and how dangerous it is to start to amend that and allow for a slide. It's not an. It's not an equal conservation easement. It's not a buffer zone for appearances. It's to protect our aquifer. So I.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that, Rob. And I'm very concerned about precedent here. And like you said, you know, what's then what prevents the other neighbors who have been playing, you know, playing by the rules to not say, oh, I can, you know, buy my way out of clearing. So I, especially over the aquifer, aquifer protection, so I am in full agreement there.
So Rosemary, I think you, you hear what the
I do.
majority of the board is. So come back with a plan and discuss it with Jackie, okay? Thanks very much for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna close out of the work session and go into the afternoon meeting session. And Anthony, if you're there, you're up with Fisher Organization.
Yes. Okay, see that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a two lot subdivision, fourteen ninety Flanders Road in Flanders. It's in the R ten zoning district. Lot subdivision, this piece right here has an existing residence on the property. The plan is to do a line, basically sort of down the middle, one lot over here, one lot over here. We previously deemed, this is a final application. We previously deemed it incomplete. I was waiting for a wetlands permanent application. As you can see, they show the wetlands here and then all the setbacks. It doesn't look like most of this property will be impacted by the wetland setbacks, but nevertheless, a small portion of it would be. They submitted everything, so at this point, I was gonna recommend deeming this application complete and scheduling the hearing.
For what day, Anthony?
For March twenty-fifth.
March twenty-fifth. Okay, can I have a motion to deem it complete instead of public hearing? Motion by Zuccarelli. Second by Robin. All in favor? Extension seven in favor. Okay, Anthony, you're up again. Eight ninety Scuttle Hole Road. That's also completeness.
Yes, so let me just preface this by saying, I'm only going to give you a very quick overview of what this is. I'm gonna recommend deeming this application incomplete, and then I'm going to schedule this for a work session in the future. Because it's just a little, a little messy. But just to give you just a little bit of background, the application is basically to subdivide this lot in the front. This property is in the CR eighty zoning district. There's a parcel in the front here that has an existing residence and a bunch of barn structures. And they're looking to subdivide this property into two lots down the middle to create one lot here vacant and one lot here, which would have the existing structures. This property down here was created as part of the subdivision. I don't remember the year. I want to say in the seventies, but it might have been the eighties. This lot was created back then, which created this lot and then a large piece in the rear back here.
Able to have your hand move, because this, this, this doesn't help me when I can't see what you're doing.
Okay.
Cursor?
Your cursor wasn't visible, I don't think.
Is it visible now?
Yes.
Okay.
See the arrow, but it's not moving.
Oh, it's not. It's moving on my screen. So.
Not going crazy then.
So, so the parcel we're talking about is down by Scuttle Hole Road?
Scuttle Hole Road and then.
Property is being divided on the long side, right?
So here, maybe I could, here, this is the front right here. Okay, so this lot, the proposal is to subdivide this into two lots, okay? This lot was created back in the, like I said, the seventies or eighties to create this piece and then a large ninety acre piece in the back. This is the subdivision map. Subsequent to that subdivision that created this lot and that large piece in the back, that large piece in the back was subsequently preserved through various development rights sales to the town and to the county. When they did the development rights sales, they must have assigned deeds and they parceledized those lots, although they would never actually formally subdivided. So they sold the development rights on all that land in the back. All of this land in the back is preserved, but they parceledized it and never got approvals. So then they came in with this application to subdivide the front and then to legalize or to memorialize the subdivision in the back. I didn't get any information as it relates to the development rights sale and we need all that documents. Plus, I found that the lot lines in the frontier aren't consistent with what was approved back in the seventies or eighties.
So it's a mess. It's a mess, Anthony.
So there's a lot of stuff going on. My point is, is that I'm going to gather the information with the applicant. I've spoken to them. And once I have more information, I could piece this together a little bit, we will have a work session to, to make sense of it. In the meantime, I would recommend that we deem the application incomplete.
Excellent idea.
Okay, motion to deem it incomplete. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor? Opposed, extension seven and, seven in favor. Then you've got nine eleven Flanders. Is that for completion and scheduling hearing?
Well, this is, this is, this is a pre-submission conference request. So this is the property. It's in the highway business zoning district. This is at the circle. Riverside, you can see here, this is the Valero gas station in Riverhead. I believe this used to be a gas station or some other use that was.
There were two gas stations, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. But it's, it's abandoned from now. This board had a work session some time ago for a gas station, I believe, a Cumberland Farms convenience store. I don't know what happened with, with that. I don't think they moved forward, but we did get an application for a pre-submission conference for a gas station in the front and a three thousand square foot seven eleven in the back. The applicant's referring to it as an accessory convenience store. So here, this is just the site plan. They're showing the, the gas station in the front and the building is triangle shaped in the back. And they're gonna need a number of variances for this. Not to mention an interpretation from the ZBA about whether or not the seven eleven store is, is accessory to the gas station. It also requires a number of variances. For example, they're proposing a dumpster on the road here in Flanders, so they're looking for setback variances, they're looking for sign variances. We're, I'm gonna recommend that we have, we scheduled the pre-submission conference for March twenty-fifth. This is just sort of a example of the elevation for the seven eleven. At that time, the applicant's design team is gonna be there, as we normally do on a pre-submission conference and present to the planning board. After that, obviously, within forty-five days, I will prepare a report for this board. But I think, I think it's, you know, the board is aware that a three thousand square foot seven eleven, three signs on the canopy, dumpster sitting on the road, relief for setbacks. There are issues with this site plan, no question about it. Not the least of which, I mean, the, the important component is the size of this seven eleven building as, as an accessory structure. But we'll get to all that. Obviously, I want the board to look at this comments. But we'll have a full presentation at the pre-submission conference. We'll see what public comments come out of it. And then we'll identify all the issues and the pre-submission conference report.
Did this go to a work, this didn't go to a work session?
You had a work session on this property for a similar proposal that involved a Cumberland Farms.
Yes, yes. And we said at the work session that we weren't happy with sizes and all this.
Do, do you have the reports on that? Is it similar in terms of?
It, it was just a work session, so there, there's, there's no official document. I mean, I'm sure there's information, but there's no reports or, they never moved forward with it, but in this case, they, they did move forward with a gas station and a seven eleven.
Work session.
Yeah, that's, that's good. Where I was going next, Gloria, was the reason why we're not doing another work session.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is huge. There's not.
It, it is. Listen, I, I've had this discussion with the applicant. I've had discussion with the board before. I can't compel an applicant to come in for a work session. I could recommend it. But again, Claire gave me this project. She was gonna work on it, but she knows that, I'm familiar with what happened there. And as her and I discussed, the applicant has submitted a request for a pre-submission conference. You're gonna get a, you're gonna get a full-blown presentation from them at a pre-submission conference, which is what the conference is designed for. I don't know that it makes any sense to have a work session and then a pre-submission conference. The reality is, and I agree with the board, you raised issues in the past. The applicant was aware of it, but the property owner or their new representatives opted to proceed with an application for three thousand square foot, uh, seven eleven and a gas station.
When was this first?
I, I don't remember the date, Gloria, but you know, I believe the applicant is here, so if the applicant would like to talk about having a work session.
Before you bring the applicant, let me, allow me to ask a question, please. I understand that we cannot force an applicant to do a work session. However, a work session doesn't start the clock on anything else, including your reports, hearings and everything else. That's why I'm asking on a project this size.
Well, let's, well, Robin, to address that, just so you know, this is a pre-submission conference. There is ultimately just a report that you're going to adopt. By the issues, there are really no site plan timeframes.
Okay, that's good.
It's not, it's not a formal application, so we're not under any timeframe. Other than the requirement to schedule.
Is the applicant here?
I believe it's Anthony.
Who is it?
I believe his name is Anthony Curio or Caricio.
Could you maybe not take the sharing off so we could see each other? Thank you.
It's Anthony, Curseo.
Dennis?
Hi, how are you?
I just had a question. What is the, is this an unlisted action, Anthony?
Yes, it's an unlisted action. And I've already given that some thought about.
Yeah, okay.
You know, to be quite honest, if it's, if it's an unlisted action and this is proceeding to the ZBA, you know, I'm the, I'm the staff member now that attends the ZBA meetings. And so obviously, the big issue as it relates to SECR is that if this is an uncoordinated, I'm gonna recommend, in my report, I could say this because I, you know, don't need to have much analysis. But as always, we would recommend that they do a coordinated review in this case, and that the planning board would want to be lead agency. Is that board that's better equipped to, to do site?
So Mr. Curseo, welcome.
Thank you.
You've heard some conversation here about what we're looking at. This is a big project. And typically with big projects in sensitive locations like this, we request a work session. It's a much easier plan for you and for the board to kind of talk about issues and before you proceed with a public hearing. So we're here to hear what you have to say and hope that you would consider a work session with us.
From speaking with Anthony, it was just gonna be a simple scheduling of the pre-site conference. I was unaware that it was gonna be, you know, given a choice of a work session or a pre-site conference. I think this is part of the procedure, to be honest with you. We have to go for a pre-site conference before we can move the application along any further. And I was, I was under the impression we'd flush out any issues, design-wise, size-wise, environmentally at this conference, kind of giving you everything we have and then you guys can comment and go from there. And then we can adjust our application if we were to go forward accordingly at that point.
Well, the arena for that is really, it behooves you to be in a work session with us where we can talk about the various issues as opposed to being in a formal pre-conference submission, which is conference, which is a hearing. It's a public hearing with a public there. So it puts, we would have a better handle on what you're trying to do if we had you in a work session and we could understand what you're thinking about for a convenience store, what you're thinking about for parking, et cetera. Because it's a very sensitive corner and we had another large application that we had many sessions on. So I encourage you to do a work session and, but it's as, we can't force you to do it, but encouraging you to do it.
Well, I do, I do, I appreciate where you're coming from, but I believe time is of the essence with our project, so the quicker we can get for the board and even before the public and flush out any issues you may have, we can discuss those at length at, at the conference. Everyone can get it out there on the record. And, you know, we can adjust it accordingly, so.
Right, well, it's not the same kind of conversation and you want to move quickly. And I, and I'll say it for the last time, it moves quicker and smoother when we understand the project and we can ask you questions. It's very different in a public hearing.
I'm just, can, can you explain to me how it's, you're gonna still be, still be able to ask me questions about the project at the conference, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, and, but, but not.
If it, if it seems pretty similar to me.
No, they're, they're, they're different. There's no action taken in a work session. It's just a conversation. It's a, it's a work session.
There's no action taken either, correct?
But it's a public hearing. Where you have the public coming and commenting.
Right.
And giving testimony and saying, we don't like it, we don't want it, we do want it. It's a different animal, completely.
I understand that, but I think it's better from, from our perspective to hear what the public has to say early and often.
You don't want to hear from the planning board? This is the appropriate.
Everybody, yeah, but isn't that, aren't we all coming together to discuss the application?
The, 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 the work session is for us to work with you. The focus of a public hearing is for all of us to hear what the community thinks. Because we already understand what you're trying to do and we've identified things we love and things that may be questionable before we actually open it to the public.
Okay.
Would you, would you have?
Would I be able to discuss it with my clients, whether or not we'd like to do a work session, because I wasn't, I wasn't given one way or the other.
But you know, you asked for, you know, tell me if this is an option here. The applicant asked for a, 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 a pre-submission conference and I have a resolution to schedule it for March twenty-fifth. Does the board, you know, would the applicant be willing to do a work session on the eleventh to at least give the planning board prior to the public hearing some type of analysis or some type of presentation? So that they at least have that prior to the, to the public hearing? Is that something that would work for the board and, and the applicant?
It benefits the, it benefits the applicant.
Yeah, is that something that we could schedule it, but we'll, we'll have the, the work session prior to that?
I'm okay with that. I have to obviously run it by my client, but that should be okay. As long as it doesn't delay us moving forward, I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as we can get that done before.
That I, I could offer or recommend, but other than that, I don't know.
Okay, so a work session on March eleventh, which would be good, and then we could always schedule it for a public hearing, right, Anthony, on the twenty-fifth? For pre-submission conference.
Yeah, I mean.
Notice, yeah.
And we'd have to schedule today.
Chair and then have the work session prior to that actual hearing.
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll have a work session with you on March eleventh? And then a public hearing on the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, I recommend, yeah, so we could schedule the pre-submission conference for the twenty-fifth.
That's fine with me.
Yes, okay, good. So Anthony will put us down for a work session on the eleventh. And we'll schedule the pre-submission conference for March twenty-fifth. Can I have a motion? Dennis, motion by Dennis, second by Robin. All in favor? Opposed, extension seven in favor. Thanks. We'll see you on the eleventh. Yes, thank you. Anthony, I just want to take off the agenda what we don't have. Is Jet Cab off?
Yeah, but here, before I go to my last one on the agenda, number eleven, Jet Cab. Twelve Oakland Farms. And sixteen, one ninety-two West Montauk Highway, they're off.
They're all off, okay. So, Madzen?
Yep. I believe Dave Radigan is here from Points East for this. Okay. Let me just see here, let me. Jackie, I, I think how this one will work is Dave Radigan has some difficulties. He's got hearing issues. So he asked that I just sort of explain what is being proposed. So the board has an understanding and then he'll, he'll go from there, so. This is four sixteen Montalk Highway. It's the R twenty zoning district. Um, we have a pending two lot subdivision for this property. There's an existing residence here. This is uh the map showing the lots. I don't believe any variances were necessary. Uh we did a pre-application report on this. Um, and part of that pre-application report, uh we recommended a fifty-foot buffer uh along Montalk Highway. Uh that was consistent uh with um the subdivision uh to the north here uh where you required a fifty-foot buffer along Montalk Highway, so you made the same uh requirement here. Uh, the applicant is now before the Health Department. Um, and the issue that the applicant had with the Health Department is that the water, there is existing water. Uh but the existing water main only comes up to what would be uh the house here. Um, uh and then the applicant had indicated uh the cost to bring the water line in Montalk Highway uh was excessive. Uh so what they were asking for is you would allow, and unfortunately, I don't have the map, um only because we're working partly remotely, so I didn't get a chance to scan it. Uh but uh the applicant's asking for two things. The applicant is asking uh if um rather than uh have them bring in the water down here, it seems that the Health Department would be willing uh to allow for a ten-foot-wide water main easement on the improved property that would sort of come across the front uh that would provide water uh service to this vacant lot. Uh so first, the applicant's asking if if you would allow for a ten-foot-wide a water line easement through uh the buffer. Uh and I believe the applicant's also asking uh to reduce the buffer uh from fifty feet uh to twenty-five feet. Um, you know, there's there's some vegetation along the frontier, obviously. Um, not as much as uh what was on the adjacent subdivision, um but the buffer was the requirement. Um, so there you are. It's two two requests, one to allow a uh a water line easement uh through a small portion of the buffer to provide water to this lot, uh the vacant lot, and to reduce the the buffer from fifty feet uh to twenty-five feet.
Question, Anthony, do they have to, and when they run a line in a water line, do they actually have to cut the vegetation? Do they have to clear it?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Do they just go under the way they've been?
Uh, you know, my guess is that they're going to have to do some clearing to 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 make it work, but we do have the applicant here, so.
Dennis, do you have any?
Yeah, I what the language of the easement, Anthony, it doesn't, this is a road front uh ease buffer?
Along Montalk, I mean?
Yeah.
Um, if I remember correctly, Dennis, I have to verify, but um on the adjacent subdivision, I believe it was a covenanted fifty-foot buffer. Um, and so we haven't gotten to that point yet where we're in the final application. Um but I believe I believe it was a covenanted buffer um that was recommended as opposed to a fifty-foot wide easement.
But how are they getting access to that lot?
Uh, this lot here?
Yeah, the the lot that they're seeking relief from.
Uh, the 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 vacant lot. Um, I have to go back and look at the report. I don't know if we we might have recommended a um uh common driveway, but if I remember correctly, uh the board actually uh was in agreement with the applicant at the time uh that putting a common driveway down the middle here uh when the 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 garage, the houses over here, uh probably didn't make any sense. Um, so it it might have been that the second uh driveway uh was going to be proposed for the vacant lot.
So they're 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 allowed to drive. I mean, the language of, boil up the language of these buffers allows for driveway and utilities, don't they?
Um, yeah, I I I again, I guess I guess it depends on how um the uh how it's how it's how we how we do the language in the uh.
I mean, otherwise, they couldn't get access to the lot, right?
Yeah, do we usually allow, we I have seen, obviously, there's always a provision that would allow for a driveway cut through, sure.
But I think the language includes driveway and you and utility um and and utility ease. I mean, I I don't have the language of the easement of the buffer, the covenant, is it a covenant, right?
The covenant, you said.
Yeah, I don't have the language in front of me, but I can't imagine we would put a buffer then to create a building lot and then preclude access. I've heard.
Dennis, you're right. When we do a buffer that's um, you know, along their access frontage, we do allow for usually a twenty-foot-wide portion to accommodate a driveway and any utilities. Yeah.
So they have, they might have that already.
They have, they may have it, yeah. So Anthony.
Like I said, the 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 only difference here, like I said, Dennis, is that um the water line easement wouldn't be coming up um the 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 driveway. Um, it would be coming, you know, it would be cut through, uh you know, through the um wherever it comes. It probably comes in, you know, about midway where the house is here, so it would have to come in and then cut across. I I you're you're right, the language might already be there, um but I've never, you know, I haven't really looked um as it relates to um a specific water line easement being asked for by the uh.
So you'll check that, Anthony?
Yeah, but I can check that. And that's fine. If we can include it, we can include it. Uh the other issue is the width of the buffer.
Can we get stay stay on the water for a second? Where is the if is the water coming along Montalk Highway?
The water line currently comes up to um where the existing residence is, so the water main apparently stops somewhere over here uh where the existing house is, and then does it continue over here?
So it's not on Montalk Highway?
It's apparently, I'm we're going to have Dave Ratigan's going to speak here, so.
It's on Montalk Highway. They could just come in.
Yeah, there was. Let me see if uh if Dave um is here.
He's here.
He's there. He has to unmute himself.
He's muted.
There's a little icon in the corner that says mute.
Um, in the lower left.
Right, in the lower left. Do you see it?
Of your screen says mute.
At the bottom. Charles, is there a way for you to unmute him? There, there we go. Okay.
I think I was doing that. No, I'm still muted.
Has that?
Yeah.
But we have the sun glaring on us, so it's hard to see the screen.
Okay, what was the question that we're posing? Where where is the water main running right now?
Dave, what problem with the water main? Why is it? Is there not a water main in front of the property?
I'm going to have to repeat it to him, so just have patience.
Let me preempt this. I am profoundly deaf. I'm not picking up anything that's transpired. My wife is going to hear what I have to say. You're going to make comment, and then we're going to have to communicate that way.
Excuse me, Dave. They're wanting to know, and just if just make sure that I'm right in saying this. They want to know where the water line is ending and where is the where does it have to go? Just explain that.
Okay, uh two thousand eighteen, I went to Suffolk County Water Authority and wanted to find out where the main was. I received a letter in October of two thousand nineteen from uh Lisa Seda that we need, they wanted us to extend the water main one hundred and twenty-four feet eastward to be able to facilitate lot two of the subdivision. The problem with that is everything with a thousand-foot radius of this subdivision is already have water. The other problem was they wanted over sixteen thousand dollars to bring it a hundred and twenty feet. I suggested to the Water Authority, allow us to put a two-inch line from the vault at line one uh to proposed lot two. She said, go to the planning board. If you can get a e a a uh utility easement, which is what we're looking for, we'll allow that to take place. Um, Mr. Treza has in his file uh a letter from Suffolk County Water suggesting that that if we go back to the board and get an okay to make that happen, they would allow us to do it. What I'm trying to do here is save my client sixteen thousand dollars for a line extension that would serve no other property but his. Uh, you served an area earlier on, all the surrounding properties that are vacant are owned by the town of Southampton. Um, unless the town at some point in the very far future puts uh, you know, housing there. There was no need to extend the line. Um, in in two thousand and six, I put a made a subdivision here in uh Quogue. And we added underground from the last known hydrant over three hundred feet, and we saved a guy over twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's my request that the board would allow a small ten-foot buffer, utility buffer, where we can two vaults right next to each other, vault for lot two would be on lot one with a two-inch line waiting to facilitate the new house that's going there once this is approved.
So Anthony, that's a different request.
Well, I mean, no, he he's, you know, so he's saying that the water line obviously doesn't, is not sitting, it's it doesn't go all the way to the property, the the vacant property. Uh, so that answers uh the the question that Gloria had. Um, the the water main does not go all the way down. Um, so they've they've asked him to extend it, and rather than extend it um to for one lot, for this additional lot, I simply asking uh to run uh the uh a ten-foot-wide water easement, which what would which would cut through uh the portion of the buffer. From what I heard, the planning board seems to think that the buffer language uh would automatically uh account for this. Um, and uh if that's the case, that that's fine, uh we could address it. Um, and obviously, I'll work with the applicant to make sure that it's, you know, in the right location and that we're not uh cutting through major vegetation. But then the other side of it is, I believe he's asking for a reduction in the buffer from fifty feet to twenty-five feet.
I still have a water question. I'm sorry, I'm being. The, rather than bring a new line into the property that which the the Water Authority would charge you for, what I think I heard said was that, well, they could just run a small pipe from the existing house to this property. Does that mean that there's going to be one water meter for the two?
No, 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 they're going to want run a separate line from the street to this vacant lot. It's a service line. It's a two-inch service line.
That's 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 what I thought that should do. Then that's nothing to do with the first lot.
No, the first lot, the developed lot would have its own separate line down to the street.
So if they're running it through from the road to the house?
To the vacant vacant.
Lot. They're they're not running it along Montalk Highway in the easement. They're going the other way. Am I crazy?
They're not allowed to run the service line along Montalk Highway. If it's a service line, they got to tap the main and punch into private property. You can't run service lines in a in a on a public right-of-way. It has to enter, can only be.
Matthew, were you going to say something?
Yeah, or either one of us, yeah.
I was going to, I'm sorry. Um, I think what they're trying to do is they're trying to keep the water service in the original location, run it along the driveway, then from the driveway, they're going to tap it and run it east. That running it east is going to intersect with your fifty-foot buffer that you wanted. So they're either asking permission to run that individual line perpendicular to Montalk Highway and reduce the buffer or run it within the buffer and make it go to the east to access the new house.
Correct. I I think it's just that usually our our common driveway easements and our utility easements are usually co-terminals because they come through a driveway.
Yeah, they go straight.
The water will be separate and apart.
This is teeing off the main water, but why does it have to go through the buffer? Why can't they?
Buffers along, the buffers along the road.
Highway.
Yeah.
So can't they do it on the in the inland side of the buffer?
That's that's what we asked the applicant before.
Yeah.
And then that that's why they were saying it's difficult to run it in the front yard, and that's why they're asking to reduce, if they reduce the buffer to twenty-five, they're saying they could run the water line outside of the buffer. If we keep it at fifty, they're saying they would necessarily have to go through that fifty-foot buffer to get to the eastern lot.
I can't figure that out. Why?
Oh, doesn't make sense. They could run parallel to the buffer. In their yard.
That's what we recommended, yes.
Yes, and that's, I mean, rather than give away twenty-five feet of a buffer.
Can we, can I make a suggestion that we come back with maps that show where the buffer is? And also for bringing the water in, so as I'm hearing here, there, this here, and I'm sorry. I can't, I'm not have the, and also, can we check the easements and see what the easements are allowing?
They have a covenant, the.
Or the covenant is allowing, it is too much supposition here and not enough specificity for me to picture this.
Okay, so what I will do is, as I said, um unfortunately, working remotely, um stuff is coming in when I'm not in the office. I will uh I will sketch something up. I have something from the applicant. I will put it on for the next meeting, uh and I'll give you a uh, I'll give you a map.
I'm so sorry. I had a staff sketch that I did for them in October about this. It might help you visualize, but we can definitely bring it back. Uh, would you like to see it?
Let's bring it back. I mean, we need other information, right?
Okay.
I'll bring it back.
Okay, so you don't.
There's too much here, there, and I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I have a little sketch that will show it, but if you want to move on, that's fine.
So there's no, there's no.
Yes, um, so uh let Dave know, we're we're going to have to come back on the next agenda. Um, I'm going to give the board some more information. I'll get in touch with Dave uh and then on the next agenda.
Okay, and when when would that be?
The eleventh.
The eleven?
March.
Okay, they want to come back for the next. Do you have, does Dave wants to say something?
Yeah, I just want to make last, one last statement by White. This owner can develop this into three plots. So environmentally, he's always, he's already lessened, right, the concern for the property with regards to thirty percent. So um, and and Mr. Treza, I I've submitted to you in your office an amended uh site plan showing how that water line and that buffer is going to work out. So I know the the plan that was up there is 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 does not show it.
Yeah, I I I realize that, Dave. I I was not in the office when it got submitted, unfortunately, when it was done, so um I I I have it, I will uh I will scan it, I will mark it up, and I will bring it for the uh for the planning board next time.
Thank you. I will let him know that. I'll I'll make sure that he knows that.
Thank you, thank you. So there's no action.
No, there's no action.
Okay, so the eleven.
Yeah.
Dennis, it's all yours.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Figure out the where we are. Where's our, where are we at the agenda?
Your number, number nine.
Number nine.
Number nine. Um, Charles, could you let in Martha Riker, please? All right, just give you guys a brief update on this. Um, it's a lot line modification. Bring everybody to see that. Yes.
Yep.
Uh, this was approved back in two thousand eighteen, fifty-six Ridge Road. Um, I'll show you guys the subdivision map. Sorry, the lot line modification. They're transferring a portion of this property to here in exchange for this area, going to this property. Uh, as far as I know, they've been stuck at the Health Department. We are getting high into the extension, so I know the board appreciates an update from the applicant. This will be their eighth ninety, ninety-day extension. Um, and if Martha is here, um she can give you guys a little bit of an update of uh where they're at, and hopefully we can approach finishing this.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Um, hi, this is Martha Riker from Tumi Lathan. Here to represent the applicant and give the board an update. So since this matter was last before the board, which was this past August, um, the board graciously gave a hundred and eighty-day application. The Health Department, um, just to give you some background. Um, when the applicant started the lot line modification, it was not aware that there was an unresolved application with the Health Department, so when it submitted the lot line application, um, it turns out there was an unfinished um subject system approval from two thousand six, and so that has taken a couple of years to resolve with the Health Department. Um, the applicant had to install a new subject system, which they've done, and the Health Department finally approved and closed out that two thousand six uh permit at the end of December. So um the so they were not willing to do anything on the lot line modification application until that outstanding permit was closed and resolved. That's since happened. They have new um surveys that were submitted to them today, and we will have. And we will have a new try-view survey for you probably in time for the next meeting. But I don't want to make any promises because the surveyors are pretty jammed up. They were supposed to have it for us last week and Squires Holden has assured me that they are 90% ready, finished with our survey for the planning board. So that's, that's where we stand with like another 90-day extension. I think we can get everything done now within those 90 days. But given the history of this application, you know, I think we can get it done in 90 days. But I want to support that we've had forward momentum.
Martha, on the, the final survey, it should just be a single page showing.
Sorry, there's a dog barking.
It's okay. On, on, on the final survey?
Yeah.
For signature, it's just a single page showing the resulting configuration of the lots. It doesn't need to be, you know, the three.
Okay, all right. So I'll let Squires Holden know. I know that the Health Department, they required a single view, and so that's what they'll be reviewing. All right, for your signature, a single view is fine as well.
Yep.
All right.
Day extension, that's our action, Matt?
Yep, 90 days. That'll take us until 26.
We motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria and second by Zuccarelli, all in favor. I oppose extensions. Six yes, one absent. Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you very much.
Let me see, where are you taking us now? We're going to?
Number 10.
Is Jackie here?
Me? Yeah.
49 Old Squires?
Yes, yeah.
All right.
And I believe the applicant is here. Jack, if you could please unmute yourselves just so if the planning board has any questions. And I will share the screen. Okay, so the subject property is in red here. The red property is adjacent to Squires Boulevard here. They have access through Old Squires Road here, which is a private road, trustee road. To zoom in, oh, sorry, did I lose the other area? Oh, I did, sorry. So let me see here. I'm sorry, I had zoomed in aerial too. But this is the applicant's property. And let me turn the survey around for you. So here you can see the applicant's property. They're adjacent to Squires Boulevard. The subdivision of Rolling Ridge, Section 2, actually absorbed the other half of Squires Boulevard. So this is the end of Squires Boulevard here, which he is requesting, the applicant and owner, Jack Roddy, is requesting to abandon this portion of Squires Boulevard where his driveway is located. And then this is a comments we received from the Trails Advisory Board. I was made aware just through public inquiries previously that some property owners do utilize the area to get to Old Squires Road and to also make their way to Red Creek and to the bay. So I did refer to the Trails Advisory Board to make sure that this was not cutting off any access. We did get support from the Trails Advisory Board because in this instance, there are two ways to essentially get to Old Squires Boulevard if we do proceed with the abandonment. One would be to cut through an existing open space. And there's a private road called Franklin to the west. And then another way is open space, which they would have to blaze a significantly longer trail, but it would essentially go to the east of the property and north through existing town open space. So I'll just show you. So this is a subject property here where the hand is. I'm sorry, the zoom didn't, must have been corrupted. It didn't merge into the PDF. So this is their property. This is Squires Boulevard here. There is an old, also paper road that is used by a trail here, which is Franklin Avenue here. So what we discussed with the Trails Advisory Board is if this is abandoned, essentially, there would be no access to Old Squires Boulevard here anymore. But we discussed a possible trail link here. This is a very well-maintained trail that goes north and south here. So the Trails Advisory Board is happy to provide a link for the existing residents of this community to, you know, essentially come walk their dogs and get to the trail system to the north. And they're also going to explore doing a new trail link, which would meander up this way and get to Squires Boulevard as well. So I just wanted to make them aware of the abandonment, just because I know that people do walk north-south in this area. And so the applicant would abandon his portion, which would make this private. And Squires Boulevard would now terminate where the hand is. But the Trails Advisory Board would allow for a walking trail to here and then a future walking trail to be blazed here to get to the water over there. And the applicant is here if you have any questions.
So our action then is authorizing the abandonment?
Yeah, it would be no objection to the abandonment of Squires Boulevard.
Okay. Do the applicant need to speak or add anything to that?
I don't think so, unless, Jack, did you want to add anything?
No, I don't think so. It sounds, you know, you pretty much nailed it right there.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe I could just say one thing. No, maybe, excuse me, Dennis, Mr. Finerty. This went way back in 89. And it was in the subdivision, this part of the road was being abandoned. And at the hearing, they said this, the dirt portion, portion of the road would cease to exist on Squires Boulevard. We also met with you in, I don't forget what the, in 17, when the subdivision was extended down to the last three lots. And our neighbor asked us to come in and give us his blessing, which we did. And I mentioned it to you again about this. And you said to go and get an abandonment. And here I am. It took a while.
A while, all right.
But that's about it. Thank you.
Yep, and I reviewed this with Kathleen, so she's aware. It's a significant portion, but essentially that public access will be rerouted. And then this would give him the other half, so that'd be the eastern half of Squires Boulevard would now belong to Mr. Roddy.
Okay, great. So our action then is to authorize no, no objection to the abandonment. And do we have a motion? Motion by, I called John Zuccarelli and Gloria on the second, all in favor. I oppose extensions. We have six yes and one absent. Thanks, Jack. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
And let me pull up my agenda. Who's next? Jackie, you got, oh, no, you have that.
Oh, actually, there's another matter for Rolling Ridge, number 13.
Okay, so we will get the same thing. Goodness, what?
Yeah, no, they just happened to be on the same day.
Okay, great.
Yeah, let me pull it up. Sorry, I was just getting it. And Charles, if you could let in Brant Reiner, please. He's the applicant on this.
What's funny, Brant's doing it?
Oh, Jack, if you could please meet yourself.
Sorry. I don't know how. I just.
I got it. I know how.
So I'll give a brief description. So Brant is the applicant's representative for this lot 11, which is 54 Squires Boulevard. This is the road reverter. We just had a public hearing on this on January 14. The 30-day comment period has concluded. We did not receive any comments of the public hearing or within the 30-day comment period. So essentially, what this was is if you follow this blue line here and this blue line here was supposed to be a road reverter, an extension of Squires Boulevard. So this extension of Squires Boulevard comes out here. The town has since purchased these lands over here, so they will not be further developed. So there's no longer a need for the road reverter and road essentially to extend to this parcel for development. So this owner is asking for a similar covenant amendment that the neighbor did at lot 12 and asking to provide, basically terminate and remove the road reverter and then provide for the buffer to be from the south. So this is the specific survey. This would essentially have been the old road. So this is what was required before with the 25-foot buffer here and buffer as well here. What they are proposing now is to have the common driveway, which exists. It goes to this portion here. They're asking to cut off the common driveway. With that, they're asking to shift all the setbacks to the true southern boundary. Have the driveway come in here. And since the driveway is already terminating here, which would cut into the 25-foot buffer, the applicant and I discussed, obviously, the driveway would come in here. You know, instead of kind of coming up north, it would follow the existing pattern of the driveway. And they have increased the buffer here. So they would still have a buffer on the south, but they've increased it to 35 feet width. And then hooking up with this buffer here. This is Franklin Avenue, which is the trail and private road that basically serves as a trail and walking trail north. And I think Brant is here. Brant, if you want to add anything?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hey, Brant.
Brant Reiner. I am here on personal behalf, helping out the neighbor to finally resolve this road reverter issue that I think the board and Jackie recognize is just no longer required. The town owns the property that was originally intended to be accessed through this road reverter. Now that the town owns it, it's open space. And we want to just make all the conditions better, connect all the open space where we can. I think the plan that Jackie showed really does demonstrate that. We've opened up the buffers, expanded them where we, where we could. And we've connected everything. So there's wildlife corridors and a lot of buffering between town trails and any proposed improvements.
All right, so Jackie, the buffer was, that was covenant, right? That was done by covenant?
It was covenanted. So this is a covenant amendment request. So we're terminating the road reverter portion. And then we're in the covenant, we're allowing, allowing for the setbacks for any residential structures to be actually from the true southern setback. And then we're augmenting the buffer as per the survey that Brant has submitted. So I have noted that it's 35 feet in width with a variable width at the common driveway.
How are we eliminating the road? That's not covenant. So is that an amendment of the subdivision? Or it sounds like it's two different actions before us. The covenant, we definitely have a covenant amendment, the buffer. But then the reverter, that, that's a separate action, right?
I think we were going to terminate it at the same time, right?
Yeah, we talked about this. I'm trying to remember the text of the, the actual text of the covenant. But we did look into it and it was never filed, correct?
Oh, right. Yeah, I think we could never find it, a filed copy of it. We could only find the filed covenant. So we did have a draft in the file, but that, I don't think, Brant, you didn't show, it didn't show up on the title report, the actual road reverter offer.
So there is, there is an offer of dedication, I believe. I think I sent that, emailed that to you, Jackie. But the action, the action was to amend the covenants. As part of the amendment of the covenants, Jackie and Kathleen had rightly said, well, if we're amending the covenants, this last amendment to the covenants actually does dissolve the road reverter. So in effect, one action leads to the other. So the simple action of absolving the road reverter offer just comes along with the amendment of the covenants. Unless I'm mistaken.
That could be clear enough?
Yes, is it specifically stated in our resolution? Otherwise, it might be some ambiguity and you might have a title issue.
In the future.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we anticipated this. I can happily add it to the, add it to the resolution. The problem was we didn't have a filed copy of it to terminate that. And if it wasn't filed, I don't know, I can still speak to the planning board supporting the termination of the road reverter as it's no longer needed. Kathleen, do you want me to add anything specific to the resolution?
I mean, I think that covers it. I remember we looked and it wasn't actually recorded.
Yeah, we couldn't find it in GIS.
Keep in mind, too, board members, you do have to have a super majority to amend this covenant.
Yeah.
I'll bring up the resolution and then I also have the existing covenants, if you would like to look at the wording.
Do you?
This is the resolution I have here, which is basically findings that, you know, that it's no longer needed. Let me see here. That we had a public hearing, the board reviewed the overall covenant amendment request at the February 25 meeting and finds the road reverters and they're no longer needed for development further to the west as the town has acquired the property to the west and also finds that the applicant's request is appropriate in that the building setbacks for the parcel should be taken from the actual lot boundaries rather than the road reverter boundary set forth in the original covenants. And further finds that the amended buffer reflected on the survey, prepared, blah, 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 allows for room for the individual driveway to come off the common driveway essentially. And then widens the buffer to 35 feet in width. So I could put another finding that the planning board supports the termination of the offer or road reverter. Yeah, yeah, I can, I can put that in here so I can make another finding if you'd like or another resolved.
I think it would be probably beneficial, just, you know, Kathleen.
Yeah, I agree. I agree, Dennis. I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay. So we'll, we'll add that. And I think with that modification, then we're ready to, I think there's, anyone from the board have any questions? Otherwise, we could act on this.
I just had one question for you. Do you want it as a finding or as a resolved? Like as a?
I, well, Kathleen, a resolved would do it?
Yeah, a resolved so that it has the force.
Got it. I'll add it there.
Okay, and do we have a motion to?
Yeah, the only other thing was it appears that the property is overcleared for recent site disturbance. So I was just asking for a site disturbance application along with the standard amended CNRs.
Okay. Get that. Okay, do we have a motion now for, to act on that?
Motion.
Gloria, there's a motion. Second is Phil, all in favor. I oppose extensions. Six yes, one absent. I've never done this on Zoom.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, thanks, Brant.
Have a good day.
All right. Are you, you've got Mill Creek, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and is Billy Germano? Can you please let him in, Charles?
He's coming in.
Thank you.
This is that one where we have to modify those front yard covenants too, right? This is just a sign, though, I'm guessing.
This was the sign parcel, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, while he comes in, I'm just going to fetch my, I closed out of my PDF by accident.
I'm here, Jackie.
Okay.
Billy Germano and the relation to Guy Germano? We see quite a bit of.
Yep, it's my father.
Okay. That's good.
Okay, sorry, I'm just ready to share. Sorry about that. I closed out of the PDF by accident. Okay, so I'll share the screen.
All right.
So this is a resolution, essentially recommending and supporting the termination of the HOA covenant. This, we were not aware, we actually offered a resolution supporting the termination of the HOA and having the town board accept the HOA parcel as open space parcel on January 23 of 2020. At that time, we weren't aware that there was a separate individual covenant that required the establishment of an HOA. So once we were made aware of that in the fall, we discussed this with the owners of the subdivision. And they requested the termination of that, which is in conjunction with what we've been trying to do. They no longer want the identification sign and they no longer need the HOA parcel. So that was terminated. And with the resolution here, I stated that we received a termination of covenant and that we had a public hearing. So it's very standard, you know, amended or declaration or termination of covenants required the HOA. And just to refresh the board's memory, this is Mill Creek Heights with the road coming in here. And then we've got the subdivision here. So it's that triangular property here that would just add to the open space. And in January of 2020, we did want to see it revegetated. I made a finding within the resolution that since that time, the property has been revegetated and with native vegetation. So I no longer see a need to hold a bond on this. It was revegetated in the early and late spring. I've inspected it several times with the site disturbances that we reviewed in the summer. I've inspected it several times, uh, with the site disturbances that we, uh, reviewed in the summer, I think it was in August. And then I also drove by recently and everything looks to be in good health. So, um, it would just be an action to, um, allow for the termination of the covenant, uh, with the supporting legal documents.
So there's no more HOA either, right?
There would be, no, yeah, there's no more HOA, HOA.
That was extinguished, okay.
Yeah, you know what, actually I'll add that because, um, we got that in the summer, so you know what, I'll add that. I didn't have the date, uh, but I will, I will add that too. Uh, we could, uh, Billy, what was it called? The wording? Of the termination that we got
The dissolution of the HOA.
Yeah. Cause we got a letter from the, um,
From the Attorney General's office.
Attorney General. Yeah. So I will add that as a finding as well.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, we can act on that, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria. Second by Robin, all in favor, I oppose extensions. Six yes, one absent. Thanks, Billy.
Very much.
Thank you.
I think Matt has the last one, Sabine.
One, Sabana Cottage, uh, no applicants are gonna be present today, they, uh, they've seen the report, they're comfortable with it, so
Okay.
We'll just go through. Okay, can everybody see the aerial?
Yes.
Yep, okay, so this is a pre-submission conference report, uh, it's a site plan and special exception, Sabana Cottage LLC. Uh, this will be demolishing the single family house and they're proposing to do a four thousand one hundred and thirty square foot, uh, two-story special trade contractor building, it's HB, so this is appropriately zoned, will actually be eliminating a non-conforming use. Um, so you know, some parking here, um, planting around the outside, pretty straightforward, they give us elevations as well, looks pretty residential. Floor plans, it's just an existing survey. So in terms of the report, um, pretty much to summarize what it was, this is in an archaeological sensitive area, uh, on Shrubland Road, uh, makes residentially zoned across the street. Uh, pre-submission conference was held for this back in January on the fourteenth, uh, no comments were received, uh, and no comments were received during the thirty day written comment period. Uh, things they'll need, you know, standard stuff for site plan, full site plan application, you know, lighting details, landscaping, elevations, engineering information, they'll need a special exception, uh, petition for the general standards, uh, you know, everything for parking, traffic circulation, drainage, uh, building elevations, I said that already, I can strike that with material and colors. Um, and then this is the only, uh, discussion item that we'll come back to later, uh, because it is into an, it's in an archaeologically sensitive area. Uh, so in terms of initial review, um, it meets all the parking requirements, uh, some of the, some of the spaces they did show onsite, uh, were varying, varying width, so if they're gonna do improved parking, they have to be done by twenty, if it's unimproved, it's uh, they're utilizing their pre-existing, uh, front yard setback of forty-one point eight feet, uh, so, and there's no parking in the required front yard. And they're showing cross access from the adjacent parcel to the south, only going one way, which in this case I think is appropriate. Appropriate, it'll, um, allow for
Me.
That's okay. I have two of them and they're being very quiet right now somehow.
Donnie, he got a haircut, he's just beyond himself.
So the cross access will be one way from the south, so people essentially going onto this parcel from thirty-nine will be able to come through. Yep. Um, and then landscaping, they showed on the site plan, we'll just need specific details, they do show what appears to be screening around the outside. Uh, drainage, they didn't provide any, obviously that'll be a condition of approval from the town engineer's office, this is an unlisted action as it's over four thousand square feet, so we'll have to do SECRE before it's complete. Uh, architecture, they did show, um, elevations, the only recommendation I have in this regard. Um, this is the front of the building that faces Shrubland, so, you know, if it's practical for the, the business owner, uh, the applicant, which they're, you know, they're aware of this recommendation that they may be replaced with this with a door just so it's a little bit more residential appearing, it's a little blank looking now, just to soften up the facade, only if it works for their layout, uh, so utility and storage area. And then the dumpster, the dumpster shown on the plan, they'll need to include screening, uh, they do show the one handicap, uh, stall that'll have to have the advantage and width. Mechanicals will need to be screened, they'll need a full lighting plan that starts as compliant and that, lastly, is the cultural features. Um, I'm gonna leave this up to the board, obviously it's at your discretion, uh, this is in a, in a New York City archaeological sensitive area. A good portion of the property has been undeveloped for a long period of time from what I can tell. So, you know, I would think that this might not be a bad thing to at least start with a phase one A, which is the survey to see if they do recommend a one B, um, which is the digging to see what's there.
Especially in disturbed areas, I mean, this is
Yeah, the, the majority is pretty disturbed, but
Oh, is it?
Yeah, oh, sorry, I lost the, uh, I'll pull it up again.
It's, but it's, it's Takahoe.
Yeah, it's, it's Takahoe.
It's right, it's right near the water.
It's right near the water too, if you look
Like Cold Spring.
Yes, look, where you see a lot of stuff, you can, it's out of this area, but I think on mine, you can actually see it. Right over here, there's water.
Yeah.
Uh, this part of the, this portion of the property, you know, from looking at the areas back into the thirties, it's pretty much been an open field, so, um, I think this is, you know, not a bad thing to
Is it all paved and everything, Matt?
Uh, this, no, this is, this is grass now.
Grass?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, this is the area where you might want to get some probes down there.
Absolutely, yeah, so they would start with the, the one A, which is kind of the
Literality
study of the area to see if it's recommended and then if they recommend it, they'd have to do the one B. And we can do that all as part of SECRE.
The other question is you're taking down a residential house?
Yep.
Yeah, what is the, um, what was, is there an in-ground oil tank or anything on the
It's not shown on the survey, um, that I can see, um.
Can we just check on, on, cause once you're taking down a house, if it hits, it does have an in-ground oil tank, I'd hate to bury that oil tank even knowing whether it's been decommissioned properly.
I can add that to the, I can add that to the report, Robin, just to identify if there's any, you know, oil tanks or, or the like onsite and to, you know, remove them.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem. That's pretty much it.
We are, your report recommends the one A, one B, right?
It does, uh, it, it left it open-ended, but I'll recommend it.
Okay. Good, okay, do we have a motion to adopt the report? Motion by Phil.
Second.
Second by, okay. Second by Zuccarelli, all in favor, Zuccarelli, we can change it, I oppose extensions. Six yes, one absent, we only have one John on the board now, so we can go back to John.
John.
All right. Any add-ons?
I don't think so.
Nope.
Okay, so we'll be back at six o'clock.
See everybody then.
Your motion to adjourn by Robin?
Yes, motion.
By Gloria, and we'll see you at six.
See you at six.
My gosh.